About major, it's a 3% marijuana tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer. In summary, another state law, a city council may adopt an ordinance to be referred to the voters of the city imposing up to a 3% tax or fee on the sale of marijuana items in the city by a licensed marijuana retailer. Approval of this measure would impose a 3% tax on the sale of marijuana items in this city by a licensed marijuana retailer. This tax would be collected at the point of sale and remitted by the marijuana dealer. So if we, um, this is, this will be on the ballot and if you vote yes, there'll be a 3% tax on this. If you vote no, then it'll, then there won't be. Though the state collects 17%, and the city is going to collect 3%. So we will get some from the state as well as the 3% that we get here stays here.
So that's by statute from the state?
Yes, the 3% tax.
Because I find it really fun that our motel tax is higher than our marijuana tax if it passes on you and other things.
Yeah, we can't go any higher than 3%.
Yeah, we'd at least need to do that.
We do get, we do get what we call state revenue sharing, which is like cigarette tax and gas tax. We do get that, and they also implemented a marijuana tax. So we have collected from the state in addition to what this 3% will be if it passes on the ballot.
Well, I think it's great. I'm offered tax on marijuana. You know, I think taxes are patriotic. They benefit all of us. I'm more concerned about how it's spent. And people really like to see what they're paying for. Like, all of the roads being torn up here. It's great, really. I love seeing it because it's a lot of work is getting done. And it seems like our alleys, putting catch-ups with trying to fill positions and things like that, that seems to be endless. And I would love to see marijuana tax go for something really visible and creative. One of the things that a lot of young people and myself have been talking about are the alleys, you know, and got to be wonderful to clean up, have some really nice art. We have young people, we have artists here, and the alleys in town are the responsibility of the town. But just in the town proper, you know, like, they could be beautiful, you know, they could be really nice and pleasant to walk through. How about the alleys? That's just a suggestion, and I want you to consider that.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. Maybe it should go to rehab for all the new druggies we're gonna produce.
Oh, God.
I just have to get that out there.
Well, that's a fact, though.
Dan Toots is.
Isn't there guidelines as to what you're allowed to spend, certain percentage of, by the state, they cap how much you're allowed to spend locally on certain items?
The way this measure is written, 3% goes into the general budget.
But it's just general budget, okay.
So if the public votes, yeah.
Well, is this one way that the, that the 3% tax could all go for the, for police salaries and things like that, maintenance of safety, public safety?
This is one of the reasons we're here, that newspaper you have. If you have ideas, put them on there so we can go over them. But I've had several people, you know, about the police, some say put it towards the water, some say divide it up, give part of it back to the schools, use part of it for maintenance, and use part of it for a general fund here for when, like, sometimes people come to us asking us for donations. And, I'm sorry, but the town doesn't have a budget for that?
Part of the money that we get from the state is earmarked for, from the 17%, for law enforcement. So that does help with that situation, so.
And in regards to the percentages that you spoke of, it seems a little out of kilter to have more motel tax in our community than a tax on marijuana, when in fact, there are two entities taxing marijuana, the Town of Lakeview, which has jurisdiction over only in-town areas, and the state. A total of 20% total is what is being proposed in the vote of the public here. And so there's 20% there. I think our tax on motels here in the Town of Lakeview at this present time is 6% on behalf of the Town of Lakeview. But the County of Lake also taxes our local motels an additional 6%. So therefore, there is a 12% tax by two entities.
So the marijuana deal, the state is taxing it?
At 17%.
17%.
Statewide, yes.
And, and some of that money comes back to?
Some of that money, not all of it, of course, not, you know, but, but a portion of it, and it's broke down by the jurisdictions which opted in, which chose to allow the new industry, the cannabis industry, into their communities.
So, so somebody that has a business in Lakeview, are they paying the 20%? If we have a 3%, that goes on top of the 17% they're paying state?
They're already paying 17%.
So it's a total of 20?
And the state gets the registered tickets and has surveillance in every cannabis store, not only here, but in every store across our state. And they watch the sales very closely for the marijuana.
Mike, is the kickback to the towns out of that 17%, is that dependent on population? What's the criteria for that?
The criteria is actually based on the number of dispensaries that are located in your community. So, you know, not that it's something that is...
The number of what?
We don't need, we don't need, we don't need 10 dispensaries, but at the same time, we would receive more of the state monies if there were that many locations here in the county.
So we have yet to receive any kickback?
No, we've already received tens of thousands of dollars.
So it's based on?
How much?
Tens of thousands of dollars at this point.
Ten of thousands, yeah.
To be accurate, our year ending was $9,941.53. $9,941.53 of the year ending this past June. Fiscal year 17.
So we have already received that much?
That's what we ended last year.
That was received last June.
And we budgeted $13,000 for this year.
And more monies are accruing as we speak right now, so.
Right, so more dispensaries, more tax money. Well, I don't know, I feel very strongly, I know that our resource officer, due to federal budget and everything, was cut out, and that's one reason we're short of policemen, right?
It's what?
Because of the grant coming from the...
For the school resource officer.
Pardon?
The school resource officer was a grant that was obtained by the Town of Lakeview to fund for that officer's position.
Right, because it was cut out of the federal budget and everything. So, I don't know, as a former teacher, I have to tell you that the resource officer at the school was very valuable to me. And it was first Jeff Kemp and then Travis. But that really was a wonderful thing that we had going. I personally would like to see all of the money go for a resource officer. That's what I think that it should go to, because there are problems with the kids, and if we start splitting that up, I think, I think that tourist tax is a, or motel tax, whatever they call it, is a totally different item, in my eyes. But I think if we could do this and restore the resource officer position, which would be part of the police force, because they served there too, that would assist in the funding of that, and if we already had $90,000 for last year, and we're going to get some more, you know, and 3%, if we can sell this to people. The only thing that I see happening with people that I've talked to is that they don't understand, since they voted against it in the county, you know, they voted against having marijuana, they think that they have to vote against this too, they don't understand the difference of, so we have to do better explaining. We have to do better explaining that a yes vote is money for the community and it has nothing to do with how you voted before.
Exactly.
So if we make that very, very important.
Part people don't understand, and the information is not getting out there.
Well, that's why we are having a meeting tonight to get the people acquainted, or given the opportunity, and I appreciate you all coming out, I mean, that's, that's what it takes, is...
But it's not getting out there, is what I'm saying. There needs to be a better effort, whether there's...
I agree with you.
I don't care if you have one shit thing in the paper or something, just...
The town should spend money to citizens when it actually should be left up to the public to vote, I don't think the town should be trying to sway them to vote, other than to tell them this is what is available for them.
But you need to provide the information to these people so that they know where the money's going. A lot of people, you can say that you've done it, but you haven't, because people are not well informed about this issue, and there needs to be more of a concerted effort towards making them better informed.
And how would you propose that?
Something in the paper?
It has been in...
Or flyers, but I...
All of our meetings on those topics were here.
Right, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you do it, but people aren't understanding it. I didn't understand about it.
I understand, it's a misinformed or misguided public is what's happening, and you're correct very much.
Jim?
Okay, the last meeting I was seeing the paper tonight, that's the first time I saw it, and I stayed in town all afternoon, called my wife, daughter, they got a meeting on marijuana, and I'm going to that meeting tonight, and that's the first time I'd ever seen that. That should have been in last week's paper. You know, you only get it in there the nights you have the meeting, that's not getting to the people.
That, once again, comes down to the Town of Lakeview only, okay, I guess I would put it this way, should the Town of Lakeview hold up its business to keep the public informed? If something comes up on an emergency basis, they should be able to be notified, and public should be able to keep abreast by perhaps our Facebook page, which would keep the meetings that we have going on, or our own website page, which is being developed at this time, so that it...
A lot of people don't have that kind of equipment.
No, sir, but you do, okay, let me finish, I just want to finish in regards to, if something like this comes up, well then, you would want your town government, or your people that you've elected as your officials, to conduct business for the town and its citizenry, to move forward and conduct business, not to wait until they're left in the shadows and, you know, behind the eight wall where they can't even climb out. So, all I'm saying is, because the newspaper is only once a week?
Right.
Then the town should not be penalized by not being able to get that information to you. So I would tell you that there is another alternative, and that is radio.
Right.
The Town of Lakeview spends money and notifies the public, just as they do in the newspaper, of the notices that are taking place. So, you, you know, if you can tell me another place, because we've just covered Facebook, with the Facebook page that the town has, we've covered the website that some people don't have, I agree, I don't, I don't stay on the web all the time, I don't, I don't stay on Facebook hardly any at all, and so I, but I think that...
Who can use that reader board, over by the fire?
Who, who takes the...
Is that for the city?
It is, it is the town's reader board.
It could be, I blurted there.
I believe it has been on it, but if not, it should have been, I agree with you, it should have been.
Hard to read it as you're driving by.
Yeah, it's kind of hazardous.
You get the wrong impression.
There are a lot of...
One at a time, please.
This is just an idea, but the ballot, the voters' pamphlet came out and everything, and there are two items in there that, that affect Lake County, and, and the people that feel that they're blindsided by this, one of them is that county initiative, and I won't go into that at all, but for this, I think when people get their ballots, and they're being mailed out today and everything, the people in the county are going to be very surprised that they're not voting on this, because this is a town measure. And so, if you do not live in this, within the city limits, you will not be voting on this, on this tax. And so, I think it's reasonable, if you have some money that, that we can do for the radio, is that, you know, a couple of the town council members give interviews, and we, and try and do a blitz at different times of the day, that, you know, this is your town council representative speaking, and, and we'd like to encourage you to vote yes, because due to the state law, this is the maximum that we can tax the marijuana, the local marijuana. I mean, I think if we went to the radio, and it is, people would have a better understanding of, A, who gets to vote on it, and the rationale behind why, and then that you are, in order to gain more revenue for the town, doing it at the 3% level, when it could have been up there. I just think that communication's 99%, and I know you guys know how I feel about that, but I think that it would be very credible if you, as the town council people, thought on the radio and talked.
It really is about education. It took us two years to bring recycling here, and it was all education, education, education. We had a booth at the market every Saturday, it was interactive. Yeah, when we first started, you didn't hear the word recycling in Lakeview, oh, those are environmentalists, you know? And it, now it's an everyday word, it's education, and it's, it's your job.
In regards to a misinformed public, because there are two jurisdictions, because the county has opted out, and I'll just put it that way, to not allow industry retail development in, in the industry of cannabis, but the town has, so the two jurisdictions clashed to some degree. But, in the vote that was on the ballot that county and town residents got to vote on, because we are all in the county, we're all county residents, we all receive the same services from the county as county citizens, but the services that are here in Lakeview are enhanced services, are emergency services, those are enhanced above what our county residents receive. The Town of Lakeview sees fit that we provide those services. We've fallen in hard times, I agree, on many of the recruitment issues, but the county, the state, all police are having problems recruiting right now. So, that aside, and I got sidetracked in that regard, but I apologize, but what I was, was trying to say is that we have to, to keep in mind that as the town moves forward with the misguided people, those who are out in the county, like you said, Lori, are going to think, why are we not able to vote on this?
Right.
But it is the two jurisdictions, and when the county voted, all citizens voted on it, the measure specifically read, and I've heard people say, the county voted, and more people in Lakeview voted for, for it not to pass, so why did the town move forward? Well, the town had already moved forward and told the state we opt-in, and that's what the town had already done. The county decided to put it on the ballot instead, and they put the vote on the ballot for all county citizens, and it read specifically, for unincorporated areas, which left out Paisley and Lakeview, and because they had no jurisdiction on our town government and the principles that we decide as voters, as you're deciding on the 3% tax, or as the council decides to run your government, as you've elected our officials to.
Well, if the county elected to legalize it, there wouldn't be a problem, they'd be voting.
No, there would be no clash, and they would benefit too from the 3% or the 17% of the state.
I woke up this morning to the news that Canada and Uruguay have legalized marijuana.
Oh, terrific.
Yay!
To get back to the...
Well, I have a question on this.
Well, wait a minute, I was...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see her.
I got quite done.
Yeah, I didn't.
I do agree with you, we need to get more word out there, and I certainly would be willing to go on the radio or put up a few posters myself, because I think that this, you know, this is important for the town, to bring some revenue in, which we really need.
Well, I think if your message were the same, you know, on both radio stations and everything, and, and do it at various times during the day, and we, we of the council, you know, are taking this initiative and, to inform you, you know, I, I just think that would be a good thing. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, it wasn't interrupting me, I didn't see her. No, I just want, I understand how, I better understand how things have come to pass. I agree with the county, that we never should have allowed it, obviously I'm one of those guys, because I wanted to know who to thank, that's why I wanted to come here tonight, who to thank for Mr. Happy Hand standing out here like he's selling pizzas, or like he's doing income taxes, and it affects our, my grandkids, it does, they ask me questions, I have to roll my window down when nobody's in the car with me and yell at that son of a bitch, and I don't mind doing it, I mean, I consider that a civic duty, and I do it every time I pass by. When my grandkids are with me, I don't swear, but when they're not, I do swear. Yeah, I get a little, I mean, it irritates me to have some Mr. Happy, I look like a reject from Burning Man, standing on our street, out there waving and everything else. It's giving a, yes, and parking that truck with it, it's giving a very bad impression for a county. I have relatives come to town, they go, what in the hell is that? And I, I explain to them, well, I don't know how that came to be, but, but I just wanted to get it out there, because there are, a lot of people feel exactly like me. And I'm just here to get my voice heard, because, okay, it passed, I understand that, it's here, but do, what can we do to keep somebody from doing that? I mean, I don't mind, there's a shop there, okay, it's been approved, been passed, but we need to do something as a, as a town, as a city, to keep somebody out there promoting it with signs and with the finger up in the air and with, you know, whatever, I mean, that doesn't look good for the kids. You people are always talking about for the kids, I mean, not you people, but people are. I was a teacher, I taught with Lori for all those years, and teachers always, oh, it's for the kids, for the kids, well, hell yes, a lot of things are for the kids, but this is bad for kids.
I would say one thing, I agree with you that it might perhaps be something that we don't want our kids to be up against, but at the same time, it is a free enterprise system, it happens on every street corner in the state, and it could be for selling furniture.
Maybe big cities have that situation.
It could be for selling furniture or pizza on that street corner, and those flags are there, so free enterprise should be able to handle it. There is another store I would make mention in our town that doesn't do that. So, just like you choose a store that you go to that you respect and like their product or whatever they're offering, you go there. If there's something that's upsetting, the free enterprise system takes care of it, you don't go there.
You know much about Amsterdam, by the way?
No, sir, I've never been there, I've never...
New Amsterdam, look it up, I mean, that is, that's a decaying society, decaying city, it's, it's a mess because of drugs, so.
Nikki, you were up first.
So, I kind of beg to differ on the fact that you said that Lakeview didn't vote in the marijuana, or I should say, Lakeview did not have a vote, but the county voted, which consisted of residents in the town. And so, whether you, it's kind of semantics, not just the county voted, but collectively the town, so, I mean, the people voiced their opinion, they didn't agree with it. I almost was more offended that, that the town passed that through without even taking it to a vote, I guess, unless I wasn't here at the time. But, so, I mean, I think it's pretty well clear that the town, community, county does not agree with it.
I would point out to you, as I said while ago, and you must not have caught it, once again, I will say, that the measure specifically said that what it would be is...
Not included in Lakeview, basically, yes.
Unincorporated, not including Lakeview or Paisley. So therefore, the people in Lakeview, why not go ahead and grab 3%? Because, just like free enterprise works, why not, we'll take those dollars in Lakeview, and the county gets none, and that's the situation now.
You're talking about the original, the 17.
The situation now is the county gets none.
But I'm not talking about the, I'm talking about the original, hey.
That is, there's only been one vote?
But see, see, there's only been one brought in.
There's only been one vote in Lakeview, Oregon.
One at a time, please.
When they brought, originally brought it in a couple of years ago, right? Am I, am that when we voted on it?
There's only been one vote.
Just real quick, so, before I got on the council, there was a resolution passed by the town to, to support marijuana industry from, from being able to be established, which...
The city council.
Yeah, which, this council, it was just a couple of months, or a couple of weeks even, before I was really the point, but, that passed, the council, which, which the measure, 91 I believe it was, allowed, if your county was a certain percentage over, you know, in support of marijuana, then you could pass this resolution and then essentially not opt-out. So the, the town decided to not opt-out, for many of the reasons, I guess, Mike is, is reflecting on, and to allow that industry in. That, that was just prior to...
Was that a town vote, or was it a council? Because I mean, was it a registered?
It was a council decision.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, there wasn't a town vote.
And then it was about a year and a half or more when the, when the two finally got in.
Okay, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, it's like, we didn't actually get a voice necessarily in that.
And it was, because the percentage was enough that allowed the town to do that. If it hadn't been a certain percentage, then, you know, wouldn't have...
No, but you did get your elected officials an opportunity, you, you elected the officials that sit here, and you gave, or they were at...
One, I actually only have...
Okay, but whomever was at that, that point, you elected those officials, or the town citizenry did, and they elected them to represent them, and the state gave an option, after approving it statewide, they gave the option to Lakeview, Oregon, and other counties east of the cascade, pretty much, to opt-in or out.
Yes, I understand that, that's not the issue.
But the residents didn't have that opportunity, so you would have had to have had it on the one.
And that's not the issue, because...
The statewide had passed, statewide had passed, but then eastern Oregon counties and cities could decide for themselves if they were going to opt-out or not. That's, that's really what it amounted to, and so...
But in our case, but in our case, that 3% was more important than what happens in our city morally and ethically and every other way, the 3% overrode.
Have you seen problems other than what you pointed out, that you don't like?
That's a big enough problem right there, that is huge.
But that happens only on retail?
It doesn't happen in every, I drive in other towns, I see, I don't see people out doing this.
You're driving, Ben, you're driving.
I drive in Ben, I'm driving, I'm falling, I'm driving.
And you don't see people out waving flags for furniture or...
Yeah, for furniture, pizza, not for marijuana!
Well, you're...
What do you want to say?
Okay, I'm not going to set that issue.
So I, so my question was...
You don't see it ever between furniture and marijuana, that's a terrific guy on the council.
Okay, so my question is this, because I, I get that it's passed, and I'm one of those that obviously voted against it, but, I feel like now tax the heck out of it, fine, because, I mean, whatever I can do to make it harder for somebody to get their marijuana...
3% is as high as we can get?
But, here's my question, a couple things, can we stipulate, be like alcohol and tobacco, that you cannot street advertise? Can, can we, can we tie that to this? I'm not sure legalities are that.
Those are federal laws.
So, can we, but we can always opt, opt and create our own rules and regulations ordinances in our town.
And you can, you can advertise liquor, you hear it every day.
Well, but there's, there's rules about what you can and cannot.
Tobacco is the only one that is prohibited because tobacco kills.
Okay, so, well...
But, but cannabis, what she said...
So does alcohol, but...
Well, okay, but does cannabis kill?
Well, yeah.
Now, it does not, there is not a case, if I get hit by some son of a gun, there's a time in marijuana, you do, but people have been driving under the influence of cannabis, they should not be, I agree with you, sir, but they have been for a long, long time.
But can you tie that, do you have that, yes or no? Do you know if you can tie it?
No, it's not, it's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do as a local jurisdiction, or the state of Oregon can't do anything on that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, I just want to bring to light that they are like right next door to the gathering place, where I may decide that I want to take my nieces and nephews and potentially my grandchildren to church, and that, and you're saying it's okay for Mr. Marijuana out there to approach us, because that's what he does when I'm walking down the street? As he approaches me?
You need to complain to the town or to the police department?
Okay, we just did it to the town.
Okay, I'm complaining to the town that he has approached me, and has spoken to me.
That he solicited?
That is not okay with me.
Just a minute, let, I, I heard him, actually, go ahead.
We have contacted OLCC, and there is, they are watching all the marijuana stores, I guess I would say, but there is a website and there is a phone number, I don't have it on you right now, but if you have a complaint or you take a picture of them doing that, they are, they are watching them very carefully, and we did, because of our signed code, we were able to get that truck off the streets. And so we're trying to figure out how to get that off.
It's still there, isn't it? Isn't it still right for a Snapchat or Burger Queen?
If it is, I didn't see it.
I didn't see it today.
I haven't been to town, I don't...
Anyway, they, they are not supposed to have that truck, because it's considered an abandoned vehicle, because they can move it around all the time, but, anyway, so we are working on that. But the marijuana, it's marijuana@olcc.com, I think, or something.
Marijuana@Oregon.gov.
Well, there's both, I think, but anyway, Oregon.gov, but anyway, so they are saying if there's complaints, to go ahead and contact them, and they are watching, and they're going to do something, so.
So please do, I, I agree with you. So please do. I, I agree with you. It should not be happening in our community or any community that has that type of industry or any industry.
And the, the person raising the flag, my understanding, and I have talked to council about this, the other council, legal council, but it's like your freedom of speech. Like people like have up their Domino's sign, or their Chuck E. Cheese sign, or that type of thing. They have a right to do that. Now, get in your face, I don't think that's appropriate. Get in kids' face, that's not appropriate. And I, I will continue to follow up and see what we can do, but.
Oh, there's madam. OLCC has told me the same thing. I have friends working there. We just have to keep reporting it.
Yeah, so that's what, you just have to try.
Charlie, what's, had hers up earlier?
Well, I was just going to say that I called OLCC, and because of precedent on First Amendment issues, unless we get rid of all signage, like high school kids holding up car wash signs and things like that, we can't one hundred percent prevent that guy. But there is something called the Joe Camel Act, which is how they got cigarettes to stop advertising to kids using cartoons. If the guy on the street corner has rubber hands or a fancy hat or something that makes him cartoonish, take a picture of him and send it to OLCC, and they may be in, will do something about it. Yeah, and that's exactly what we've been told, so, yeah. Which is exactly what he dressed as.
Well, see, there's another problem here. Location there. And that is that, you know, like every Thursday, I work very closely with food, with Food Bank, you know, with the food warehouse. But the food pantry is there at the gathering place, because they are the ones that are running that. Their real problem, and we're trying to maybe move the food pantry down into a section of the warehouse, because some of the very people that need to utilize the, the food pantry are recovering people, and the problem is where they have to park the cars on the street, and they have to go past this, and they, and, and so we have our recovering people, we're funding to get, you know, in rehab and everything, and then we have these, these people out there that come on in, come on in, come on in. And they've got small children with them on Thursdays, when, when we do the food pantry there. And it is not a good location for them with a church on the corner.
Well, the same thing applies to what we were just saying. You know, if they tell you or someone needs to contact OLCC, especially if they have little children, because they can't go in there anyway, unless they're twenty-one. But, so if they're saying, come on in, and, and I guess it's a little form of harassment.
Well, in, in Washington, they passed a law that does not allow any marijuana leaf signage. So you can't have, like, I think that's probably why the Top Shelf Medicine has a lot more respect from the community, is they have no marijuana leaves on their windows, where New Amsterdam does, along with their clothing, things like that. But in Washington, they do not allow, I mean, obviously, that's a state level, but, but we, we can't control here. But, you know, of course, I think there are ways that you could pass things within a community to, you know, Sisters does it with their signage requirements, things like that. But, so, kind of back to passing this tax, I think that we need to get the word out there more about, I mean, I personally feel like we should pass this, because if you got to charge somebody three percent more on their marijuana, maybe it'll hold them back. I don't know. You know, but it would definitely be something that I am curious, of course, it all goes down to the business, but what are your expected revenues for this upcoming year? Because my understanding is that marijuana shops cannot use banking. So how do we track this? Because it's a, on your honor system?
No, they have to report to the OLCC. That's what I'm saying. They, they see the register tape of every dispensary in the state.
Oh, okay.
They do.
And they have surveillance cameras on every level that walks in. I mean, if you walk into any dispensary, there's cameras on.
Is it that, is it that, Mike, that the state will also be collecting our three percent from that?
And then sending it back to us?
And our percentage.
So we don't have to do that bookkeeping.
Okay, so what, what are, I mean, I don't know how long the dispensaries have been here, but what is our projected revenue for our dispensaries? We have two, correct? What, what are you guys projecting for revenue for the town then? Are we talking a couple thousand?
Six percent that way.
Well, I mean, they're saying nineteen, seventeen percent is nine thousand dollars, but let's say we have a highly active sales department.
It was late May when the first one opened, and the other followed, as you know.
Of this last year?
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's.
So we don't know.
You know, the state has sent us our funds, but like I say, it's going to change even our, our ratio, because the number of dispensaries that we have, those funds that we received already are without any dispensaries in the town, because we opted in.
Okay.
So we've got a base rate, but now that we have different outlets, and I think they even take into consideration growth operations as well, and so the number of entities that are cannabis-related, when they take it into the ratio figures. And so hopefully, we'll get more as time goes along. That was what we all said as a council. We wanted to see it taxed at some point. We would have liked to have seen it taxed two years ago, but we didn't have any dispensaries, but they finally opened, and now it's time to address that. And that's what we're hoping the citizens will do, step up and say.
Well, this is the thirty-second group as well? Is that in town limits?
It is.
Okay, by the way, does that affect?
The only way they can operate is in town. You can't operate anything.
Oh, that's okay, okay. But they're not a dispensary, correct?
No, they're not a dispensary.
So does this tax them as well?
They don't tax them, and there will be no tax from the town. But the state's portion, the state taxes the whole industry.
Yeah.
And so the state.
They get that, yeah.
We get more of a revenue.
Through the seventeen percent, yeah. Okay.
So has anyone contacted the owners of New Amsterdam?
I've talked with, with, not New Amsterdam, but I've talked with the owner of, of Top Shelf, and he says business is brisk.
Are, are you talking about?
I hate to delve into a man's business more than that.
Because I believe that the owners are out of town.
They are.
And what about New Amsterdam? Who are the owners of New Amsterdam?
They're out of town, but I know that Elizabeth Kristen, you know, runs it.
I know. But what about the owners? Are they aware of the problems here?
No, not them, I hope.
With the signage?
Probably they do, yes.
Oh, yeah, there's been a lot of people I've seen confront them.
The owners?
Are not. Thomas Masvidal?
No, they're not the owners.
Oh, they're not? Okay, yeah. So, that's my question. You don't know?
It's a New York company, and I do not know that they have been contacted. They haven't been contacted by this, but.
Well, they would certainly be interested in hearing about this, so. Because I don't really know anyone that likes it. And I'm part of the marijuana culture. You know, I have been for fifty years. I have, it changed my life. It saved my life. And I'm not really a part of the pharmaceutical community. I consider that pretty rough stuff.
I got a question back up behind you. Go ahead.
Jimmy and I were just talking to the facility south of town, the growth facility. How did that get approved when it's so close to Head Start? Didn't Head Start, and within a thousand feet of that?
It was, it was there and approved for starting their, their construction by the OLCC long before Head Start was built. Head Start just opened this year.
But that Head Start, because I was part of that.
Well, that one.
Been in planning for over ten years.
But it didn't start yet.
And the setback from my, my recollection was a thousand feet, that, but from a retailer, not from a grower.
Grower.
There's a few other categories, but it's from specifically retailer.
And that, that is fenced and pretty difficult to get into, so.
No, I'm just throwing out the point there that I get asked a lot, and I ask myself. I'm wondering how things came to be, because it just doesn't seem right to me.
Well, and a part of it is, is we're not familiar with a lot of the city stuff. We do own a home. We own a house here in the city. We live out.
I like it that you came to our meeting to find out.
So that's why we're a little concerned.
Absolutely.
Plus, our grand, we have grandchildren who live in the city and out. And so that's why we haven't been before.
Well, your money, your money you pay in, in property taxes.
Yes, we are.
Lakeview is certainly paying for what we do in our town government. So I'm glad you're here to, what's your opinion?
So would you guys use a committee to decide how the funds are used, or would it be a town council-only issued decision?
Well, is this for, is this for, if it passes, we'd like to see the three percent used?
Yeah, just for, yeah. I was, I missed that part, but yeah, it's probably just your comments on.
It is.
Our comments on how we would like to see it used, like, if we would like to see this used for police, put it down. If we would like to see it split up in some way, put down what we think, you know, or, and then we leave these with you tonight?
There's a box right there.
Okay, there's a box over there.
So a couple of things have been asked. One, we asked what projection was. I asked that last time, when we announced this meeting. We don't know yet. I don't think those numbers are in yet. OLCC could probably share them with us, but hasn't yet. As for your other question, Nikki, about a committee, we're more willing to have, to form a committee, just like we have for the lodgers tax. We just got to get people to volunteer to serve on these committees. So I'm going to have to step out. I apologize. But the, the main thing that I've heard of this meeting is that we just need to communicate this better. We've got marijuana here. There's not, probably a lot we can do about it now. I, I think we're going to continue to follow up, just as, as Robert had said, we've called OLCC, we've shared some information with them tonight of what we have been doing, what we have been telling people to do. You know, people have approached me and I said, contact OLCC, because they're the ones that regulate this any more than we can. But there, you know, everything stops at them on, on the regulation side of this, this industry. So as we continue to share information about this, before the, you know, ballots go out, is it tomorrow or today?
The ballots were mailed today.
Today, so.
So it, to me, you have to jump on this.
Yeah. It's probably be a really good way.
We've got the paper here recorded.
We'll put it on our Facebook page.
You know, that, it was on the front page today. I know about this meeting. Not a lot I know, obviously, show it because of the late timing. We only planned this meeting a week before the meeting, so it was hard to get the paper in any sooner. But we're, this is, who knows if it's going to pass. If it passes, then I think we should form a committee, and we'll decide how it's, hopefully by then we'll have the numbers, and then we'll be able to show where it should go best. I mean, law enforcement is something that I talked about back in June, when, when the, the ten dollar fee did not pass, that, that although it didn't pass, we didn't, we budgeted for that sixth position in this year's budget, but it was taken from other areas where we really didn't need to be taken from long term. So this might be one of those areas where we can make sure we have this funded going forward. But we don't know the numbers. As we said, thirteen thousand is what we adopted as a budget, getting that shared tax from the state this year, where we got roughly ten thousand last year. It, those numbers will continue to rise most likely as, as we're in the industry.
So the goal here, the goal here tonight then is to give our input on how we would like to see this used, but the outcome of the meeting should be that there's got to, we've got to get it passed first.
Right. And so that's the town, council's responsibility, and, and all of ours as citizens to talk to people and, and make sure they have the right information.
It was to start sharing the information, and it will be over the, over the, you know, this video is being recorded, so it's going to be shared. Hopefully, people watch it. We have a Facebook page, I'm sure. Legally, I guess we need to figure out how much we can support this, other than just sharing information that, hey, this is out there, and it is a way to help fund the town if it passes, and then leave it up to the people.
I think the facts are a big piece. Like, a lot of people don't realize why you're only doing three percent. They don't realize there's a cap.
Except the max we could.
And I think that's what we need to let them know as well, but that's.
I, I would also point out in regards to, I don't know if Darwin came in late, but I would point out once again, that the monies from this go into the general budget, and the process for the general budget is a budget hearing process that I would invite every one of you to take part in, because that's where those monies will end up, in our general budget. And your comments, at that time, when those budget hearings are going on, will decide where those monies will be spent. So, you know, I mean, that's, each year, that's a very fundamental point of our government. And so for you to get involved in our expenditures at that point is when you need to get involved, because we have to improve our budget for the year ahead, for the fiscal year ahead. So I would invite all of you who are interested in deciding how our monies are spent, whether it be for law enforcement, whether it be for fire departments, whether it be for the town streets or anything else, get involved in our budget process. That's when the decisions are made. And so those monies will be divvied up.
And re-complaining that budget process begins when?
It's usually in February, we start looking at the schedule for the budget hearings, and then we go through the process, so.
So by law, we're, I believe, budget-wise, we'll have to pass a resolution saying one of these monies are inappropriate.
Right.
Once, once, if this passes.
They're going into the general budget.
Is that what it said?
All right, it's all to the general budget. That's why I don't want people to.
If you want the money, you have to pass it.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah.
I'm excited.
Does anybody have anything else?
But the state says the maximum is three.
If it is not, we will adjourn the meeting at six forty-seven.